Counsel, would you please sign in? Holly?
All councilors present, with Councilor Stefano previously requesting to be excused, and a quorum has been declared.
Thank you. Next up, we have agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mr. Stefano from the meeting.
I second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? Please non-start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We've got citizen comment next up. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizen wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. I have three cards here. Would you please come up to the podium? You've got a three-minute time limit. Identify yourself and your address for the record, please. First one is Alex Ansari. Thank you, sir, for being here.
My name is Alex Ansari, currently homeless, and that's what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about the growing homeless population this area is going to see and why. I don't know if you're aware of your neighboring counties passing new land use codes and regulations that have made hundreds homeless in the last several months. I have been documenting this since September, what has been taking place in Costilla County. And there are many ads on the Internet that have been advertising this area. You type in "land for sale Colorado," this area comes up. Now, we're being treated as criminals, including myself, for trying to live in the county of Costilla. There are things I'm not going to talk about now because there is not the time. We're talking about harassment, we're talking about stalking, we're talking about illegal trespass without a warrant on people's land. Now, I understand you're a city, and you're growing as a city, and you will continue to grow because of the wealthy investment in Colorado. But there is a solution that you could ponder, and that's creating a subdivision where I'm not a criminal for living in an RV. I have 2,500 cash right now. I'm in your streets because all of your surrounding areas have banned living in an RV without a septic. Let me ask the audience this, that thinks they're not affected by this: How many people have five grand to move into a new house and apartment? But in Costilla County, and Sawatch County, and other counties, they are expected to have that septic from the get-go. Where is that going to lead people here, right now, moving into Colorado, winding up on their land, being visited by code enforcement, telling them they have 10 days to get off or they will be charged with a crime? Now, they're going after people's property, they're putting liens on people's property. This is what I'm being told. So I asked the county, I asked the city, to propose alternatives to La Puente. I don't believe La Puente is a solution to homelessness when someone has a vehicle or an RV. People need these beds that could freeze to death, but they're actually going out there. I don't know if there's a connection between the county of Costilla and La Puente. They took a picture of my RV here on page nine. It says that Robert is counting those that qualified for the federal government's point-in-time homeless count. I think this is about getting people on welfare. And I did not come here to live on welfare. I make $700 a month running the guy's website and my YouTube channel. My website is OffGridCo., C-O, where you can read everything I've documented about what's happening. And I can be contacted at that website. You're going to have more people in your streets this spring, this summer, or this fall. And either they can be dealt with by the police, they stay too long at Walmart, or they can go to Home of Shelter, or a more humane solution can be identified. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Next up, we have Jeannie Holcomb. Jeannie, would you please come to the podium and... What's your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Janine Holcomb, 4140, Road 112 South, Alamosa. I would just like to thank the city council and the hockey team, or our parents that put together the proposals for the multi-use facility. Paul Duarte, Sharon Varner, John Saxton, Rob Pickett, Carla Hardesty, I'm sure I'm forgetting some other people, but... And the Park and Rec Department, Hines, Andy Rice. I don't know Heather, but I feel like I should. Anyway, thank you so much for going ahead and giving the go-ahead for this project. Just a little bit of my personal history. I have a son that plays on the JV team. He is goalie, and he's very proud of that position. He lost his dad six years ago to cancer. So he's suffered quite a bit with some depression, with some other things. Hockey is the one thing in his life that he is passionate about, and it makes him happy to play. He's a different kid when he's on the ice. So if you think that it's not going to make a difference, I'm telling you right now that it will make. And that's just one kid. I'm telling you, it's going to make a difference. The other thing that I didn't say last time because I was a little bit late getting here, or I would have done the comments, is pickleball is a growing thing here in Alamosa. It's a lot of fun. I've been playing it for a couple of years now. And if they can use the multi-use facility for some outdoor pickleball courts, I think that people will come. It's like that movie Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. I'm pretty sure that's what's going to happen. Pickleball is about ready to explode. We have a person that I play with that is getting his referee certification. He wants to put together a tournament this summer, which we talked about, or I heard everybody talking about last time. You bring in some of those kinds of events, and it just helps all of Alamosa with all of that. It's just on the cusp. It's really going to expand. I truly believe it. So anyway, big thank you to all of you. I truly, truly appreciate it. Thanks to everyone for all of their hard work on this project.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Counselor Coleman, do you have a comment?
Yes, I have a comment, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Holcomb, for coming out and saying your thank yous to the staff and everyone. I appreciate that. I had the fortunate opportunity, Ms. Holcomb invited me out to play some pickleball this past weekend, and it can be addictive, I tell you. I think it really is something that... I was really impressed because she wanted to show me that there is another use for the multipurpose facility, and I believe that will be another additional use that we could use it for eventually. And right now, we do have pickleball in the city of Alamosa, as well as in the town of Del Norte. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment? If not, we'll move on to Mr. Jeff Woodward. Jeff, thank you for being here.
Counsel and city employees and everybody that supports us, my name's Jeff Woodward. I'm 13271 County Road 106 South in Alamosa. Come talk about Early Iron. If you'll notice on Consent Calendar B, there's a request for two special event permit. And the one is no big surprise, in September, that's when our regular Early Iron Festival starts, and we bring in over 600 cars. And a lot of special events going on that time of year. But the one I want to talk about and explain to the city council and to city managers and all the employees is this, one that's coming up on June 21st. We're not going to have another 600-car car show, although I wish we could. I wish we could, but that's not going to happen. But there's a significance to this. I want to give you a little history. About four years ago, I got a call from a friend of mine in Phoenix, Arizona, that said, "Jeff, did you know that the Vintage Air Road Tour was coming through Alamosa?" Well, Vintage Air is a air conditioning heating company for special interest vehicles. Huge company out of San Antonio, Texas. I said, "No, I had no idea." When they coming through? Well, this call came to me on Monday. He said, "They'll be there on Wednesday." So, he said, "Is there anything you can do for them?" I said, "How long are they going to be here?" And he said, "No, they're just traveling through. They want to know if there's a good place to eat lunch." I said, "Absolutely." I said, "There's a good place to eat lunch, Cole Park." So I rounded up all the troops, Early Iron, and the police department, and everybody, and we gave them a grand welcoming, and we fed them some lunch here at Cole Park, and it was great. We gave them police escort into town. We met them out at Walmart, and I got to go with them and got to go with Robert Jackson at that time. And first thing he said to those people, they'd never met me in their lives, he said, "This is the first time we've ever let him ride in the front seat of the car." So I've never lived that down, believe me. But that was just a lunch stop. Four years ago, it was just a lunch stop. They were impressed. Another significant part of that is they always bring a national magazine with them. This year, they're bringing Street Rodder Magazine, as well as one of the sister magazines. So we're going to have two national magazines with them, okay? And the most significant part of it is, is they're not stopping for lunch. They're coming here and they're staying two nights. Alamosa is a destination point as opposed to a drive-through point. Now, what they do is they start in San Antonio, Texas, and they make a big tour. This is a seven-day tour. They'll go to Durango, and they had all kinds of places that they could have stopped. But they had the... Rick Love, the president of Vintage Air, called me and said, "Jeff, we'd like to have a two-day stay in Alamosa." And I got to thank Jamie Greeman with the Visitor Center for all the work that she's done on this thing. For four years, every year, she's reminded Rick that Alamosa's still here, and she's sent him a packet of brochures, reminding him that we have the sand dunes, we have a train, that we have all these cool things to do. So on Tuesday night, when they get here, we're going to feed them lunch, or not feed them lunch, we're going to feed them dinner, do a local flair for them, have a band. We hope to... Well, we know we're going to do Ghost or Sausages, and Woody's Q Shack will be there, I'm sure, doing something, you know? I don't know what they're going to do, but they'll do something. But anyway, we're going to make this an event for these folks. We don't want them to ever forget Alamosa. And I think we can do that. Wednesday, we've got... They're going to go down and ride to Cumbers and Toltec. Thursday, they're going out to the sand dunes, and then they'll end up in Pueblo over at the Street Rod Nationals, and that'll be the end of the event. So this event is special. We're real lucky that we have national attention. And I just want to say thank you to the city for giving us this beautiful facility that we can use for the police department, city works, Parks and Rec. I mean, it takes us all, and I've said this for the whole time that I've ever been a part of Early Iron, is that it takes us all to make this stuff happen. And this is just one of the few things that we get to do, that we can put Alamosa on the map. And I thank you all, citizens, everybody. I thank you all for the support, and we really look forward to doing this, if Consent Calendar B passes.
Thank you, Jeff. We certainly appreciate what you do for our community and for the new things that are coming in. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. It's a pleasure to be a part of this community, I'll guarantee you. It really is.
Any comments for Mr. Woodward, Counsel? Counselor Coleman?
I just want to thank you and your entire team and everyone who you're involved with for making our city available to those people who are coming to our town. We appreciate that.
You bet, absolutely. Like I say, it's a privilege and an honor to be a citizen of Alamosa, that's for sure. It really is. It's kind of nice to be able to brag and show off a little bit with these people in Texas and Florida. This is a national event, so we're real lucky to get them to stay here two nights, as opposed to a drive-through.
Thank you, Jeff, and we appreciate citizens like you, definitely. Thank you very much. Do we have any follow-up from staff on any of the comments? No, thank you. Next up, we'll move on to ceremonial items. First thing is Arbor Week proclamation, and I believe Marilyn Lozier is here.
I have Tree Board.
Marilyn, and a few, Adam. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm Marilyn Lozier of the Alamosa Tree Board, and this is Audrey Lu of the Tree Board, and here comes Adam Moore. What I'm here to mention to you, and for some citizens out there, I have some handouts. During this year's Arbor Week, which is next week, we have three tree plantings, and I gave counsel all a copy of this. We're going to be planting some trees in Diamond Park and in Boyd Park, and part of this is funded through a grant we got from the Colorado Tree Coalition and Excel. And the idea here is to properly plant trees under power lines or near them. I think all of us who've lived here very long know about all our trees that look like this, and they end up being rather dangerous and ugly. So the idea of this is planting trees that work correctly in those places. So this is the handout you have. The other thing we're going to spend just a few minutes talking about is, last year, we received another Colorado Tree Coalition grant to do an inventory of our park trees, and those, all the parks in Alamosa except for Alamosa Ranch, and street trees. And we took street trees to be those that are, especially in downtown, between the sidewalk and the street, or those in other parts of town if there is no curb or gutter within eight feet of the street. And there were 2,099 trees inventoried. And we have a brief presentation, and since Adam was in charge of doing this, he is going to present that. And at the end of that, we're going to just have a brief, we hope, demonstration of the online inventory, so you can see all these 2,099 trees online. And it will... Just doing it kind of briefly because we know you guys have a lot to do, and how many stats can you take in at once anyhow?
So besides being a citizen of Alamosa, I also work for the Colorado State Forest Service, and I'm a member of the Alamosa Tree Board. Now, we did an inventory for the city of Alamosa, like Marilyn said, 2,099 trees. We can plug this into a formula that takes into account the location of the tree, the size of the tree, the species of the tree, and give us a value of what these are worth. So that comes out to about $2 million is the benefit that these trees provide. So that's shade, that's stormwater protection, that is increased value of houses that you have from the trees in Alamosa. One of the pieces of data we collected was the species. What are the different trees out there? And so the top four trees we have here, probably not a surprise to some folks living here, is Siberian elm and cottonwood are pretty high up there, so is blue spruce and crab apple. In general, for a good, healthy urban forest, we recommend that an area not have more than 10% of one population of a species there. So what this is telling us is that we need to continue to plant trees in Alamosa, and we need to continue to expand the variety of trees that there are being planted in Here's an example of some of the other trees that we could additionally be planting in Alamosa. And this happens to be just outside, back here, if we could see through the wall, a little planting project that was... When was that?
May.
May of last year that was done. And these were actually trees that were donated as well. So lots of venues for being able to try to get trees out there and get them planted in the city of Alamosa. Another thing we looked at was the condition of the tree. Is it healthy? Does it have bad form to it? Trees start off, when we start, just go to the tree and look at it, they start off in a good form. They can either be exceptional and move up, or they can start moving down in quality if they have damage to them, whether it's from mowers, whether it's from deer, whether it's from somebody running into it, whether they have bad form and they need pruning to them, whether they have a disease to them. So they can start going down in quality. Luckily, a good portion of Alamosa trees are in the good category. We can move these trees that are fair up to the good category by doing some additional maintenance to them, doing some additional pruning, maybe doing some additional protection to them. So some of the things we might want to do in the future, continue to educate the citizens of Alamosa on the benefits of trees, ensure the ones that we have there are properly protected and mulched. What that does is it just helps keep the tree from being damaged in the dry environment we have. It helps keep the moisture in the soil so the trees stay healthier longer. And then, depending on the budget, is start doing some of the tasks that we identified in the inventory. So doing some of the remediating, so going out, doing some of the pruning of the trees, moving them from fair to good, doing some clearance pruning so they're not in the way of the public, and putting trees on a rotational schedule so that we know they're getting pruned and staying healthy instead of whenever we can get around to it or whenever somebody complains about the tree. And then whether or not we want to keep the inventory updated. There's a lot of benefits to having an updated inventory, from managing pruning rotations to seeing increase, decrease in value of trees, seeing trends within the city. Another thing we looked at was the diameter distribution of the trees. We measure the trees at four and a half feet above the ground, it's the standard that we use, and we have a very good spread here in Alamosa. But what this does not show, and what we could take all that data with and do, is we could take this and show what the breakup is between species. This actually has, a lot of these small trees, these are the Siberian elms that are growing in places we may not necessarily want a tree. So this may look like we have a lot of young trees, and it may look like we're planting a lot of trees in Alamosa, but unfortunately, we're not doing planting as many as we would think. So we need to keep that planting going, we need to encourage the public to keep planting as well. As Marilyn mentioned, there's a couple events coming up next week for different plantings. One of the things also that you guys worked on last year was passing an ordinance that was in relation to trees and safety. And so when we were looking at the inventory, catching the trees, is we looked and see and looked, is it within that eight-foot clearance that the ordinance said, over sidewalks? If it wasn't, we gave it a little tick. 295 trees, you're walking down the sidewalk, you're going to bump your head or something like that with them. So those are trees that could potentially get pruned. They're either on city property, some of them, or citizens. Also, the ordinance called for a 14-foot clearance over roads. We have big trucks that drive through areas, they can self-prune the trees, that's not necessarily where you want it. But on the other hand, we can also do it so we know that it's pruned where we want, and it's pruned so they're good and healthy. And then also, we have as another safety concern, there's 25 spots where when you're approaching a stop sign, you can't see that until you get real up against it because the trees are blocking that. So there's a couple safety things that came out as a trend with the inventory. So some of the goals of both the Tree Board and the inventory is, what can we be doing to improve the health and how well the trees survive here in Alamosa? What can we do to help develop a progressive, long-range management plan for the city, to keep those trees continuing to be planted, keeping them maintained, and keeping moving in a positive direction, and then, like I said, continue to plant the trees? And as part of coming here this evening, I left each of you guys a couple different brochures from the organization, Trees Are Good, that's a nonprofit part of the International Society of Aborigines. And so that just gives you some background to read up on for... We have one of the members of the city council that's Laishian to the Tree Board, so he's a little more up to date on some of the things we do. But this will just give you guys some additional background, and if you have questions, don't be afraid to bug us as the Tree Board.
Thank you, Adam. Were you able to get the inventory up?
I could not get it to load, so I went to the PDF.
Okay, so we'll look at this. All right, so if you go to alamosatrees.net, it's online, it's a website I keep up that is about Alamosa trees. It's all about us, and there's no advertising or anything, but there's a tag on there, a tab for the inventory. And if you slide down a little bit, maybe we can see this better. So the trees are out there, it's on Google Earth. I don't know if you can... There we go. Okay, and you can then move around?
Sorry, the city attorney was able to access it for some reason.
All righty. There's just something magical about us working together. So, yeah, if you mouse over any of these trees, you can see the... Sometimes we don't have addresses, but you can see what kind of a tree it is. You can also, from that drop-down menu up there, look at all or filter. I wouldn't worry about that too much right now. You can also zoom in and move around so you can check your neighborhood. So that one, the ash trees in that particular part, that's a little bizarre why that's not showing. Oh, because if you scroll down, you'll see a whole bunch more. Pick them... Yeah, there we go. And if you, again, if you go over one of them, you can see, you can zoom in. And some of these aren't quite correct because some of them were inventoried after leaf drop, and we're going to be double-checking them when they leaf out. And so if any of these are trees that your house or ones you know about and they're wrong, please let me know because we want to get this correct. So it has the condition, as Adam talked about, it has the height. We can help get a sense of what our community forest is all about. So please go take a look. I didn't quite finish with this handout that I have some more up here. The tree events we have next week will be in... On Tuesday, we'll be planting three trees in Boyd Park underneath the power lines, and I will be going around distributing leaf list to all those houses so they know. And we would love people to come. You're welcome to come. We will also have shovels. Wednesday, we'll be at Diamond Park, and we'll be planting six trees, and that's at 3:30. We hope it's the time that the bus comes back, so families can come help plant. That's always fun. And then, we had another late donation that I think is really neat. We'll be planting five trees in Carroll Park, and a lady who is a kidney recipient wants to give back to the community and honor her kidney donor. And so the Donor Alliance out of Denver is purchasing five trees, will be planting a ponderosa and four spring snow crab trees. She and her family will be there, and we'd love anyone else that could come. And this is Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in Carroll Park. So we have those things coming up, we would love it. These handouts also show you the trees that we'll be planting. It's showing the ones that we planted under power lines, so that they're the proper trees for doing that. The backside tells you how to plant a tree. And as we had a wonderful tree pruning workshop today, was pointed out, the least expensive thing you do for the lifetime of a tree is purchase a good tree and plant it well. Make that hole two times larger than the root ball. It's not that hard, but if you do it right from the beginning, your trees have a much better chance of surviving. And yes, I'm a tree hugger, so... But thank you for letting us talk with you, and we just... Did you... Oh, yeah, we do have the proclamation comes up. And I think we're done with our presentation. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much, Marilyn, and Adam, and Audrey. Did you have anything to say? Thank you very much for that. Counselor Veale, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, real quick, last summer, May or June, I was in my living room watching TV, and I saw off the reflection of my TV, this man walking around my trees in my front yard. So I kind of rushed out and see what was going on, and it was Adam. And I know nothing about trees, and he gave me the ins and outs of my three crab apple trees in my front yard. So then I took him to the backyard real quick to see if he could talk to me about my aspens back there, because some of them look kind of weak and that. And he told me a little bit about this project, and I... He needs to get a lot of credit in the whole Tree Board, and I think maybe Hines and staff.
And that's Hines.
Yeah, this was a very extensive project. I think it took five or six months, maybe more, to document all these trees, and this is a great tool for us. Thank you, guys.
I did leave one person out. I have really enjoyed working with Hines these many years to get... Every year, we've applied for a grant, we've gotten one, so that's seven years in a row. And they're not huge, but boy, it's good, and he's good to work with, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Coleman?
Yes, I too would like to thank you for the work you've done. When I get home, there's a tree in my front yard that I don't know what type of tree it is, so I will go online and Google and see what kind of tree it is. But I'm just curious, I know you mentioned that we have 2,099 trees. What would be an ideal number of trees for our area?
I don't know that there's ideal, but I just heard something at dinner tonight that I absolutely loved. This was Julia Wector had taken her daughter to a college, and they were proud to announce that they had one tree for every student. Wouldn't that be cool if we had a tree for every citizen?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I don't have any things on that, but I like that, so I'll let Adam jump in. He's the expert.
We counted individual trees, another aspect of urban forestry and managing the tree canopy that cities have, is the goal that's been promoted around the nation is looking for 40% canopy cover around the city. So if you basically look straight down, and you did a bunch of random points, and said whether it fell on a building, or whether it fell on a lawn or something, and did all the trees, we should be aiming for 40%. So we did not do that part of the analysis. That's something that we could look at down the road. But another thing that we didn't look at, which is a potential project, and to be honest, it pops in my head as like an Eagle Scout project or something, is defining what and where you could put additional trees and having people map that, because there's a lot of areas, probably even more than the number of trees we counted, that we could put trees, again, and either new or again, because when we would do the inventory, because it took a few months... it took a few months to do, I'd be doing an area, and I'd bike around town, walk around town a lot, and I'd be like, there's not a tree there anymore. So I'd go back and I'd delete it from the inventory. Very rarely did I go back and have to add a tree, 'cause I noticed one was being put in. So there's, besides new spots, there's spots where people are removing trees, that we can continue to add them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Gregel?
I had a question, now that we're talking about tree planting. Here about a couple of years ago or so, we brought in a tree doctor, there's a certain term for his name, and to look at these trees there at Cole Park, and some of them are pretty bad shape, and I was wondering, are we still planting more trees in Cole Park? Because, you know, as, as we take them out, you know, we'd like to see something there, and maybe you could talk about that neighbor?
Yeah, most of the, the older trees that we know and love in Cole Park were planted in 1938, and they are getting to the end of their lifespans. And that was, excuse me, one of my main goals being on the Tree Board, and since then, one year we planted twenty-four new trees, we've planted another, I think?
Five last year.
Five last year, and then there's many around the city complex. So that has been a major goal, because they, we did have an arborist, and it was before Adam was around, and he came in and, and worked with, Hines went around, and so that, and some of them, as you see, they're getting old, they were getting, where they just have a little bit of stuff at the top, and trees do not last forever. They don't, we like to think that it's always gonna look like this, but they were planted little like this in 1938.
Oh, my God.
So, we have been trying to do that, and you have to be careful in planting, 'cause you can't plant them in the shade of a big tree, or they will die because they don't get enough sun. So, trying to finagle that while leaving the center of the park open for all the activities, like the early iron festival and so forth, kinda try and work that out. And then we have deer, and squirrels, and kids, and all that.
Yeah, but another area too, that I think maybe eventually we have to look at, is the cemetery, you know, Alamosa Cemetery, 'cause it's so beautiful out there, and I know there's some trees out there that are pretty, you know, that I'd probably need a, what'd you say, an arborist?
We did inventory the trees in the cemetery, excuse me, so we could actually go and pull out exactly how many trees there were in the cemetery, and over the last few years, Hines has been doing a very good job of putting anywhere from, I don't know what, five to seven trees on average a year into the cemetery to, in those expansion areas. So luckily, we do have some efforts going forth to, to go into the cemetery.
Yeah, well, thank, thank you very much for all you do, and like I say, we need more and more trees.
And one thing we discussed today, there was a wonderful tree pruning workshop, and four of the Alamosa Parks and Rec crew came, and that's just great, 'cause we also need to keep the ones we have. And yes, we do have a harsh climate, but there are still things we can do, so we're hoping to ramp that up as well, so that we keep the ones that we've planted and so forth. So, here's hoping.
Counselor Henzley?
So I also wanna thank you for everything you've done, and like Councilman Coleman, I'm gonna definitely look at this map, I know I have a crab tree in front of my house, and wanna see what kind of condition it's in. I do have a question, is that you showed the ones that were fair, good, and then excellent, and obviously the excellent was really, really small. Is that something to be concerned about, or is good what we're looking for?
Good is what you're looking for. Excellent tree would be great, but it pretty much has to be picture-perfect to us, and we start nitpicking a tree to get it in that category.
Okay.
So, the fact that you don't have a lot of them, don't worry, I mean, we've done inventories in other towns, and they have no excellent trees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam, Audrey, and Marilyn. I guess it's said that only God can make a tree, but if we work, we can all plant one and do it properly. Thank you so much for your presentation. I don't have a proclamation, she's got it, there, yeah. Shall we all go down?
Mayor, just one second.
I couldn't find it, sorry about that. I apologize for that, I, I had it here all along, but somehow or other, it was hidden in here. Anyway, Arbor Week Proclamation 2016. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside in planting of trees, and planting more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Week is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees in Alamosa increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, and trees, however they are planted, are a source of joy and renewal, and whereas Alamosa has been recognized as a Tree City USA for the twenty-sixth year, and twice a recipient of the Growth Award by the National Arbor Foundation, and has a strong desire to continue its street planning and maintenance ways, now I therefore, Joseph P. Lucero, Mayor of the City of Alamosa, and along with the Alamosa City Council, do hereby proclaim, April 24th through April 30th, 2016, Arbor Week in the City of Alamosa, and I recommend all citizens to celebrate Arbor Week and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and I further urge all citizens to plant and maintain trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, given this twentieth day of April 2016. Let me sign this, and we will be down there to give. Next on our agenda, we have certificates of appreciation for a couple of exceptional volunteers in our community, and I'd like to start out with Mr. Justin Davis. Justin Davis is the current president of the San Luis Valley Disc Golf Association. He helps lead his organization, who are responsible for improvements, to the course. He's a great leader, and helps lead course users to take ownership in the recreational amenity. He also leads regular volunteer cleanup and weekly league play, and raises money to contribute to improvements for the course. Thank you, Mr. Davis, would you like to say a few words before we come down and present this to you?
Sure, if I got a second.
Absolutely, please do, sir.
Thank you, City Council, and everyone here, I recognize a couple faces here and there, even from out at our second golf course, which some people probably don't even know exists. About six years ago, Dylan Vance got together as an Eagle Scout project with some members of the community, including Hines, and Brian Banky was involved in Parks and Recreation at that point in time, and started a movement to get a disc golf course here. I myself had been playing since the 90s, so I was really excited about it, once I heard about it and got a little bit involved, and in fact, got the opportunity to stand the guys, in front of you guys once before, when we were getting that all together. At the same point, we had a wild idea that we should probably be doing something out there as far as adult sports goes, we started a weekend recreational league that is in its fifth year now, and we run two city-back tournaments a year, and it's a pretty good thing, it's a really good thing for all the community. I mean, I see everything from, you know, kids this tall to people that are retired out there playing and enjoying it. It's, it's a sport that pretty much anyone can get into with almost zero cost, discs are really inexpensive, thanks to the city, and the community here, they've put up a free course for us all to play. So, it's really not about me, I really like being here, there's really a core group of people out there that make all this stuff happen, you know, there's a whole, there's about thirty members that show up on a pretty regular basis and play leagues, and collect money, and keep it clean, and core group about five or six, but, shoot, I'm not gonna say no to being here either, so. I just wanted to make it known that we are out there, it's, it's a wonderful thing, we're working on some expansions now, I'll probably be seeing you all again when we're presenting, we would like to add nine more holes to our course, and make us really at the top edge of Colorado Disc Golf courses, which there is that, I mean, there are people that are out looking for an environment like we have, and we have a beautiful one with cottonwoods. And in fact, hearing you speak, I was wondering if there's any chance we could get you guys involved and come do a walkthrough with our trees, because we have some cottonwoods that definitely could use some attention from a group like yourself. So, hearing you speak, I thought that, that's all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, we've got a couple of counselors that wanna make some comments, Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, I met Justin Davis about five years ago as well, I used to play out there a lot the first two or three years that it was out there, and he does a phenomenal job of keeping the course clean. Like, as you mentioned, Mayor, the, running the, the tour, the weekly league play and that is just top-notch, and there's people around the state and our, in our region who wanna come now mostly to play disc golf, because our course is, is top-notch, and it's gonna, and it will get better under your leadership, Justin, so thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Vehill, I too play disc golf, and I love it when the snow melts and we're able to get out there and play often, and Justin, you do a fantastic job rounding up everyone, making sure that the tournaments go smoothly. What I like about it is that the course is, is a first-class course, but a lot of people don't know, but people travel to Alamosa a lot on the weekends just to play disc golf. What I'm most impressed with is when I go play disc golf in other communities, and they say, "Where are you from?", and I say, "Alamosa", so many positive comments come from those conversations from people across the community and other communities, so keep up the great work, and we'll be on your side when you come to talk about additional disc golf areas, okay? Thank you.
And Mayor, I'd like to add from a staff perspective, we forgot to mention that through your fundraising and efforts, we were able to even add this last year with some shelters, and some places to, and, you know, sit down and eat or relax for a minute too, so thank you for that help as well, for enhancing the course.
Thank you. And from a personal point of view, you know, Alamosa's a recreational area, and anytime people can find something to do, it's, it's a positive impact on the entire community, so, so thanks again. Anyway, with that, I will read this here, and we present it to you down there, is that all right?
Sounds great to me.
Okay. Certificate of Appreciation. In recognition of exceptional service and dedication to the Alamosa community, we are proud to present Justin Davis, this certificate of recognition, presented on April the 20th, 2016, on behalf of the Alamosa City Council, and me, Mayor of the City of Alamosa, Joseph P. Lucero, will present this to you. Mr. Abbey is the creator and administrator of youth model rocketry classes at the Alamosa Family Recreational Center. He started in 2011 with a hundred and fifty participants, three different sections, beginner, experienced, and high-power. It's offered twice a year, in the fall and the spring. Matt makes sure every child's dream of blasting off a rocket is done in a safe and fun manner. Matt also started a local chapter of the National Association of Rocketry, the San Luis Valley Rocketeers. He is also a key developer in the club's firing range, the Russell Rocketry just southwest of Alamosa. One hundred children will participate in the spring launch. He served as the club master of PAC 307, and received an award from the High Mountain Scouting District through the Rocky Mountain Council for his efforts reforming PAC 307. He will be coordinating the Cub Scout Day Camp in August, to be held at Cole Park, with an anticipated one hundred and fifty to two hundred children attending from around the San Luis Valley. He and his wife have used the space located next to their hobby store for game night, and built a race car track, cart track, in the back of the store, providing place for children to recreate safely. Thank you for being here, Mr. Abbey, would you say a few words for us?
You're welcome, Mayor, thank you. And now I have to say something.
Absolutely.
So, my preferred hobby is model railroading, the rocketry thing was completely an accident, I blame Hines. So, yet, the, you know, the recurring theme here this evening is that the city has done an extremely good job of creating an environment where people who have an interest or an enthusiasm for something can go make it happen and share it with their peers or, or the kids. The rocketry was completely a whim, my parents brought my old rockets from when I was a kid, because I refused to bring them home from their house, I thought storing them there was fine. And, and my kids were interested, we launched rockets, the neighborhood kids turned up, including the previous city manager's kids, and word got back to Hines, and, and then we had coffee. And so we're doing a class at the rec center, and it just fills up, and that's one thing sort of led to another. So that's, that's how that happened, but it was easy because Hines and his team, and now Andy in particular, you know, facilitate and pave the road and make things happen. We have good facilities, we have good staff that make it simple for myself, and, you know, Jeff, who wants to do his activities, and the disc golf guy, sorry, disc golf guy, where I've taken the Cub Scouts to go play, to, to go do these kinds of things. And, and there's something really interesting happening in town, because I'm not hearing parents say, "There's nothing for the kids to do." I'm not hearing it. And I think that's gonna pay dividends for us in ten, twenty, and thirty years down the road, in terms of the stability of the families and the towns, and some of our other issues, I think, will start to water down by that time as well, as a result of it. So, my wife is the one that holds the hobby store together, she gets all the credit for that, someday she'll get a paycheck, but right now, it's just credit. Some days she'll get a paycheck, but right now it's just credit. And of course, I'd be negligent if I didn't point out that it's my position with the railroad and the resources and the time that that job affords me to be able to do things like this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abbey, and I believe we have a couple of comments from Councilor Hensley.
So, I want to thank you very much. I do appreciate it. I think it is so important, like you said, as far as that there's things for the children to do. I know my kids, they were, they're older now, but they did a few rockets, we did some of that. It was so exciting for them and we didn't have that avenue to continue on. It was something we just kind of did. But I do know there's a passion for it, but again, how important it is both with what you're doing there, with the scouts, doing the carts in the back of your business. All of these things are activities that the children can do and like you said, is so vital and it's a starting point. So, as we move forward, like you say, some of the issues and concerns we have will get watered down. And I do think even like the disc golf and all of these different activities we do, what we do at the rec center, also building the ice rink that, or you know, the ice rink that we're going to do. These are all things that are going to invest in our youth and I think pay dividends. So, thank you so much.
Counselor Daniel?
Mr. Abbey, I just wanted to say thank you for your time and energy and effort. It means a lot, I think, as someone who participates in city activities to see the volunteer aspect of this and working with the children, although I would say, is there an age limit? Because I would love to learn how to shoot off a rocket.
Absolutely not. Just sign up. You walk up to the counter at the rec center, say, "My name's Christina, I'm 11."
Okay.
And they'll just sign you up.
Totally blew me. But no, thank you very much for what you do. This is a very exciting thing for our youth.
Counselor Gregel?
Matt, I also want to thank you. I've been out there watching you.
You have.
And the way these kids just, the way you do the safety part and everything, the way these kids are, they're like attracted to them. And just watching these rockets shoot clear up in the air and then going out and retrieving them, so you do a really great, great job for us. And like you said, Hines has put stuff in there, pottery and a lot of different stuff that a lot of different people want. You don't only have to play softball or basketball or there's a lot of other stuff that you can enjoy out there, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
Matt, I thank you very much. I've had an opportunity, I would like to thank your wife and your family as well and your staff who works at your store. I enjoyed test flying my little helicopter over there. He taught me how to use it before it crashed, but I also want to, and helped prevent me from crashing it, but...
Parts are affordable if you're terrible about that. It opens at 10.
But I want to thank you for all of the volunteer efforts that you put into the community and helping out the youth. Like you said, you don't have parents saying that there's nothing for their kids to do. And here's why it's important. Right now, because of the program that you're administering, those are kids that are getting outside and participating in activities and learning new things. Those kids are not looking into doing drugs or it's taking them away from doing drugs and it's also keeping them away from committing crimes out in our community. So, what you're doing is important and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you for being a positive force in the lives of many of our children as well as our young adults. With that, I will read this certificate of appreciation and we will come down and present this to you. Certificate of Appreciation. In recognition of exceptional service and dedication to the Alamosa community, we are proud to present Matt Abbey this certificate of recognition presented this 20th day of April, 2016, on behalf of the Alamosa City Council and me, your mayor, Joseph P. Lucero. Counsel, these are some of the fun things that we get to do, aren't they?
Yes.
It's great, absolutely. Next, we'll move on to Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Counsel may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have a few. I will read them off. We have to approve the minutes of the meeting of April 6, 2016. Approve the minutes of the special meeting, February 24, 2016. Approve the minutes of special meeting, March 30, 2016. Receive March 2016 monthly reports. Receive March 2016 expenditure reports. Award of bid, 2016, one-ton lift gate truck. First Amendment to non-exclusive license for limited use, AT&amp;T telecommunications facility craft tower, and the request of Crown Castle for an expansion of an existing permitted use by special review to allow the installation of additional telecommunications equipment on an existing tower. Counsel, what are your wishes? Counselor Gregel?
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion, we approve Consent Calendar A.
Second? Counselor Vehill? Got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff. We have two items by the Public Works Department. We have a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number 8-2016 and ordinance approving the annexation of the 2016 Zenitram annexation petition for the annexation of attractive land located in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 9 and the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 10, all in township 37 North, Range 10 East, New Mexico Principal Meridian, Alamosa, Colorado, Colorado, and Alamosa County, Colorado, sorry about that, and authorization to purchase equipment to meet an immediate need at the wastewater treatment plant. Heather, did you have a comment on a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number 8-2016?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As I think everyone's noticed, Pat Steenberger, Public Works Director, is out this week and so we are pinch hitting on some of his items. And this is one that you reviewed at your last meeting and did pass on the first reading. It is an enclave that is lying generally south of the West 8th Street and west of Vacated Center Avenue in the Washington addition. The owners have requested annexation and they plan to begin to market the property for sale once the annexation has occurred. The property is served by paved streets to the north, water is available, and sanitary sewer is available to the eastern portion of the property. Service to the western portion of the property has been evaluated and dependent upon the type of development that occurs. There could be required some owner financed sewer line extension, but that would be dependent upon the development. There has been one change that was made to the annexation agreement and we discussed it at the last meeting and that was due to the petitioners to convey fee simple ownership to the city of about 5,118 square feet of right-of-way that is necessary for realignment of the intersection of West 8th Street and United States Highway 285. Under normal considerations, when we are looking at annexations, you can require this as a right, as a condition of annexation. However, given that the city has been in discussions with the owner since 2011 on potentially purchasing this, we felt that we should honor some of those discussions. We changed the agreement to include a purchase price set at $25,000. The property appraised at $18,000 in 2011. We did receive an updated appraisal and it actually came in at $18,000 again. So, there has not been much change since 2011. Staff's recommendation is to obviously conduct a public hearing and unless you hear evidence presented otherwise, to approve the annexation.
Thank you, Heather. And so, with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number 8-2016. Anyone in favor or against this ordinance? Would you please step forward to the microphone, identify yourself and your address for the record, please? Mr. McCann?
Dan McCann, 82009 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. When I was here at the last meeting, when they had the first hearing about this, what stood out to me was they were talking about a safety issue with the children going to and from the school. So, anything that can provide safety for our kids, I'm for. And let's face it, when they're walking to and from school, they're not thinking about what they should be thinking about and we don't want a kid run over.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else in the audience willing to speak on ordinance number 8-2016? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number 8-2016 and bring it back to council for further discussion or a decision. Counselor Gregel?
As the city manager pointed out, we've had quite a discussion on this and there's no further questions, I'll make the motion, we approve ordinance number 8, 2016.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on ordinance number 8, 2016. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. We'll move on then to authorization to purchase equipment to meet an immediate need at the wastewater treatment plant. Thank you, Amanda.
Good evening, counsel. In front of you is the background information for the request that Public Works has for the immediate purchase of the new bar screen at our water treatment plant. As you guys are aware, our plant was constructed in 1995 and we have been dealing with ongoing aging problems and some of the items that were out there the last couple of years, several items have been identified that staff has been wanting to put together to try and do a large financing to get some of those needs done because of the ongoing disruptions, excuse me, that this bar screen is causing in the operations at our water treatment plant. It has changed the priority for that and so we're asking that we are to go ahead and move forward with the purchase of this. Pat did an excellent job of going through and looking at both what it would cost for us to get a new one and what it would cost for us to have the current one we have redone because of the difference in price between bringing it if we were to go through and bring it back to like new condition and then the company that has offered to give it to us at almost half of the price of one of the other vendors. Staff is recommending that we go through and we do purchase it at the new one at the $85,000. Just because partially the company is giving us a very good deal trying to get a nexus into Colorado, it's not going to be anything of less value than what some of the other companies are going to give us in that respect. The cost for it would then come out of what we currently have budgeted for the SCADA project that was for this year in our capital improvement plan for our wastewater treatment plant that we have scheduled at $150,000. So, we would bring back to you a different budget amendment if it's approved tonight, which would be changing those funds from being purchasing that $150,000 SCADA. We'll add that into future amounts that we plan on bringing back to council once we get all of those things identified, be able to move forward with that project.
And just to add just a tiny bit of detail, in explaining the difference in the equipment in regards to deferring the SCADA purchase and this bar screen, the bar screen's critical for operations. If it's not up and running, we cannot treat the water from a wastewater perspective. While the SCADA is needed and we hate to defer items, it is something that we can continue to treat and it doesn't create those types of operational issues. Additionally, the financing package that Amanda referenced, the SCADA can be folded into that as well. So, we feel from an operational perspective, we definitely need to get this accomplished and deferring the other is not going to hurt the operations.
Thank you, Heather, and just for the sake of information, the Hydradine flow-through screen and washing compactor is $150,000. The AquaGuard Ultra Clean Screen and Wash Press Unit is $135,294. The MN Self-Cleaning Fine Screen and Screening Washer Compactor is $85,800. And the Hydradine Engineering Rebuild of Existing FS Style Filter Screen is $52,000. That's a total of $425,094, is that correct? No?
No. What you have listed there is different companies and what those companies were offering for that piece of equipment.
Thank you for straightening that out for me, Amanda.
So, we would be looking at the one for $85,800 as that being the full price of the equipment that we need to be replacing.
Thank you, Amanda.
And then the other clarification, the difference between rebuilding the equipment for the $52,000 and then doing the new equipment with the washer compactor at the $85,000, that also, Pat had explained that if we could get away from having the wet disposal onto the floor and staff having to handle that to where then this would be dry, less handling from a staff perspective, that that is ultimately what we wanted to get to. And so, that's why we would recommend the $85,000 compared to the $52,000 rebuild, quote.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Daniel?
Do we know the expected life of this equipment that we're buying?
I want to say Pat had told us 15 to 20 years.
Okay.
So, it's got a fairly long time period. What we've gotten out of the current one is further than what was anticipated to begin with.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Gregel?
A question for our city manager. In installing this equipment, will there be a shutdown of some sort or how does that, you know?
Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way Pat explained it to me is they almost build it to where it's plug and play almost and so the disruption should be as minimal as possible. So, maybe a few hours, but not definite. My impression is it wouldn't be days or anything like that. They almost have it ready to go, they stop, they move the other and they put this in, is my understanding, so...
I was looking at those photos that were sent out, that's a pretty big piece of equipment.
And they may also do it in phases, but that was one of the questions and he said it's actually less than what you would anticipate. Is that, do you remember having that conversation?
I believe so and I think, and Daniel may be able to answer that as well, I don't know that it is operated and that the bar screen is used 24 hours, seven days a week.
Oh, okay.
I think it's used in different time periods of the process.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't see Daniel sitting back there. Would you like to jump in?
No.
Okay.
That's great. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Heather and Amanda, I'm not for sure which one I should address this question to, but do you know what type of warranty comes with the purchase of this equipment?
Pat did go through, I don't remember exactly what he had said, but one thing that he did bring to my attention was that the company that is offering... did bring to my attention was that the company that is offering it to us for $85,800 is actually, the president of it is actually the person who started the Hydrodyne Flow, which is one of the main companies in the United States right now. And so that was a plus for this company being that he let that go, went to something else and then started at something different. So he's been in the business long enough that he feels comfortable that even though he's being able to give it to us at a fairly low dollar amount, that it's going to be good product.
The other, and it doesn't directly answer your question, so I'll need to get back to you on that, but Pat felt that by them wanting to get into Colorado, that they would probably extend their warranty as well as something to, in addition to the very nice price break to take a look at the warranty. But I can't tell you if that, they went from a year to a year and a half to two, I'd have to double check on that.
Councilor Vehill?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, as it says in our council briefing here, this equipment is 21 years old and it's time for it to go and I would hate to think that our city staff, our workers out there are working in unsafe conditions. So I think we really gotta, we gotta get this done soon. And I'm part of the, I think we should get a new one. I don't think we should fix it. And I appreciate staff and Pat and Amanda finding the one for $85,000.
Thank you, Amanda. And you know, the budget for this project was $150,000, came in at $80,000, $85,800. That's a savings of $64,000.
You know, it's not necessarily a savings. What we plan on doing is deferring what we had set in the budget, $150,000 for the SCADA, which is a different thing altogether, taking that monies, deferring that purchase, purchasing this from those monies in order to get this done in a time-sensitive fashion.
Good work. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor?
Councilor Gregel?
One more comment, kind of piggybacking on Councilman Vehill's comment. This thing is that old, city manager, are we gonna, as we put this, redo this puzzle, are we going to be able to find the parts for this, the stuff out there? Because you know, you're having to replace a lot of different parts eventually.
Well, I think anytime you have any type of treatment facility, you're going to have changes in technology and you're going to have equipment reach the end of their life. And so the goal is to be able to have the funding to replace it in a timely manner and replace it with items that hopefully are better because the technology's advanced and that you can make those different pieces fit. Since we're not rebuilding it, trying to match something that's 21 years old is, you know, not to have to do that is very important. And so to be able to buy an entirely new piece for this portion of the treatment plant is very valuable.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, council. And so with that, the chair awaits a decision or motion.
Mayor, if I may, I move that we approve the authorization to purchase the equipment to meet an immediate need at the wastewater treatment plant, specifically the MN Self-Cleaning Fine Screen and Screenings Washer Compact for, in the amount of $85,800.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on the authorization to purchase equipment for the wastewater treatment plant. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. We'll move on to finance. Tonight we have one specifically dealing with resolution number six dash 2016, a resolution amending in part ordinance 19 dash 2015 for the 2016 budget. Thank you, Amanda.
Tonight comes before you the first budget amendment for our 2016 budget. It's fairly straightforward and simple. On the revenue side, we are increasing our miscellaneous expenses, I'm sorry, our miscellaneous revenues for a check that we received for the paint machine that was damaged in our street accident, $6,900 for dividends that were received from Pinnacle Assurance. And on the expenditure side of things, we are increasing by $35,000 the expenses that we had already approved for Excel Energy to do the gas and electric into the SID 14 that we finished last year. And then $6,000 to increase the line item for the Training Foundation. You'll see that offsetting as well in our revenues. What that does is our police department has an agreement with the Training Foundation. So there are some of the items that they do and are able to go and do training for that the foundation reimburses the city for. And the fact that some of those things over the past few years, we're going beyond the $5,000 mark that I feel comfortable bringing it in and taking it out, we've made additional line items for those. So as the monies are received, we'll do that on a quarterly basis to show the revenue and the expenses for those items. And then in our enterprise fund, we are increasing expenditures by $200,000. These are for items that council has previously approved. We have $150,000 that is for the front nine pump at the golf course and $50,000 for the shelter for the recently purchased glass crusher.
Thank you, Amanda. Does council have any comments or questions of Amanda? We'll entertain a motion. Councilor Vehill?
Thank you, mayor. I move that we approve resolution number six dash 2016, a resolution amending in part ordinance 19 dash 2015 for the 2016 budget.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the resolution amending in part ordinance 19, 2015 of the 2016 budget? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. We'll move on then to city manager legal. We have two issues, a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number nine dash 2016, establishing stipend schedule for volunteer firefighters. And resolution number seven dash 2016, a resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Alamosa, Colorado to reimburse the city for certain capital expenditures from the proceeds of a future borrowing and providing certain other matters in connection therewith.
Thank you, mayor. In regards to the resolution or the ordinance establishing a stipend schedule for volunteer firefighters, this is an item that the staff has been researching for about three, three to four months. There's different questions that brought to our attention that how we were paying the firefighters was not necessarily in line with proper protocol for how we needed to pay them. So we looked into the different areas and this is something that we feel comfortable with, gets us closer to that. We also needed to try to maintain morale and try to maintain the budget. And so this recommendation before you, we feels more in line to maintain a volunteer firefighter designation that also helps from their retirement and things they're already vested in because those are definitely for volunteer firefighters. And yet, at the same time, we're hoping it keeps them equal to what they would have expected and what would have been in the budget. It is challenging to predict that 100% because a lot of it's dependent on call volume and who's on when we get those calls and those types of things. So we will be monitoring this and if it turns out that we were off either dramatically over or dramatically under, we may need to make some adjustments in the future. But hopefully, we're going to get it close and this will help us be more compliant from a volunteer respective. And I know you have a public hearing and we can address any questions as well.
Thank you, Heather. So with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number nine dash 2016, establishing stipend schedule for volunteer firefighters. All those in the audience or anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the podium. Give us your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number nine, 2016 and bring it to council for further discussion or a decision. Councilor Gregel?
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion, we approve ordinance number 19, 2016.
Councilor Daniel?
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance number nine, 2016? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. We'll move on to resolution number seven, 2016. Heather?
I am actually going to have Amanda cover this one. She's the one who has been having discussions with some of the council and coordinating with the potential person we would finance with.
Thank you, Amanda.
Counsel, this is one of the key, one of the first key points that we have that we need to go through for our water augmentation plan. State statute requires council to approve a resolution in order for us to reimburse ourselves for future financing that we're going to do. The timing of our augmentation plan has made it a little bit difficult to try and go through because we have so many moving pieces. And so this resolution is going to give us the opportunity to purchase water rights that we have already negotiated on those costs so that we can be reimbursed prior to going through and actually triggering the finances. The resolution, the way that it reads, estimates total expenditures at $3 million. At this point, staff doesn't anticipate that that would be, but for worst-case scenario, it's best to already have those things in place in the event something later comes up. Then we don't have to go back and backtrace some of those items. So what our future borrowing is going to do is going to include water rights, the acquisition of infrastructure, storage, engineering and legal fees. By going through and setting this resolution, we then will be able, once we go through and we secure those financing, we'll be able to replenish the monies that we're using out of the general fund and the enterprise fund at this point to backfill those funds with that financing.
Thank you, Amanda. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments for Amanda?
I did, mayor, I'm sorry.
Councilor Gregel?
See how I word this. On the reimbursement, will some of the reimbursement come from also this water that we're leasing out? Because you talked about the enterprise.
It's a separate portion of it. What this is actually setting up is for us, because what we're purchasing right now, we will be folding into that full package that we're going to borrow from.
Okay.
But in order for us to be able to replenish those monies back to our funds that we're going to currently use the cash flow out of, we have to have this resolution in place.
Sure, I understand.
Now, another moving part of that is going to be the lease of those revenues, monies that we're going to have coming in, but it's not necessarily the part of the financing. We may be able to use those in the future to pay for the principal payment of this, of the financing that we do on an annual basis.
Okay. Eric?
Counsel, it's really just a timing thing. We don't want to commit to the financing yet because once we pull that trigger, we have a limited number of months in which to expend the monies that are approved. And we don't yet have a firm notion of where we're going to look for our acquisition. So we can't really pull that trigger on some of those major purchases until we have those more in hand and know what they are. But by the same token, there are things that we currently do need to fund and we would like to have them financed by the same mechanism, we just can't pull the financing trigger yet. So we'll fund those out of existing funds, either in the enterprise fund or the general fund, and then reimburse ourselves through the financing to take care of the timing issues. It's just a timing.
And then also, as Amanda explained, the anticipated potential revenue that you asked, how it fits into that timing is more to probably pay off any financing versus pay for these direct expenses.
My understanding then is that this is a mechanism to finance acquisition then?
It's a mechanism that once we do trigger the financing, we can pay ourselves back. So we're not actually triggering the financing portion of it yet. It's just saying, once we do, we can pay ourselves back for expenses we've incurred at this point.
Thank you.
Is that correct, Amanda?
Yes. And remember, as we talked, once we hit that financing, we're doing it, something similar to a construction loan. So we'll have about a 12-month window that we will have from the time that we go through and we start that to be able to expend all of those funds in that 12-month window. And because, like I said, it's a time-sensitive and we've got lots of moving targets in all of it and trying to acquire everything at the same time just isn't something that we're going to be able to feasibly do. So trying to have these mechanisms in place is going to help us as a city to be able to reimburse ourselves.
Thank you, Amanda. Councilor Coleman?
Thank you, mayor. If there are no other questions or comments, I would move that we adopt resolution number seven dash 2016, allowing the city to reimburse the enterprise fund and our general fund for expenditures made for the augmentation plan project prior to finalizing and borrowing to pay for expenses related to the project.
Councilor Hensley?
I second.
Got a motion and a second on resolution number seven dash 2016. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. Looks like we have moved up to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report? Councilor Hensley?
So I was, this last week, I was at the tourism marketing board meeting. Lots of great stuff, lots of conversation in different areas. But a couple of things I thought I'd like to comment on is, first of all, the banners that we are partnering with them on. Their goal is to have them completed by May 1st. They're in production right now. And so the goal, I think, is to get them hung and be able to do that around May 1st. The other thing that's really exciting is, I believe the data set at May 3rd, they were still confirming that, but it looks like May 3rd, they're going to actually have a Colorado Tourism Roadshow. And they're going to come to Alamosa and they're going to officially present those banners at the Bistro Rialto on that day. So that's pretty exciting news as well. So I just thought I'd report on those two areas.
Thank you. Councilor Daniel?
I attended the rec board meeting on April 14th. We talked a little bit about, well, several things. It's actually a really cool group of people, but that a local group of hobbyists are exploring options for unmanned aircraft, small planes and rockets. And the rec board and Public Works are going to work together to see if there's any place on the ranch or anywhere else in this city that's far enough away from the airport that that would work. And so that is a pretty exciting thing, I think, for the hobbyists in our area. Pickleball also came up at the rec board meeting and so it is a growing sport and we will be adding hopefully that and basketball courts outside of the rec center in years to come. And that the biggest thing, I think, was that there will be sand volleyball going in at Carroll Park and that they're going to fix that and it's going to be a great place to play volleyball. And that the group decided that the spouses and immediate family members of employees of the city will get free membership to the rec center. And so I was very excited. We did a lot during that meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Councilor Gregel?
I had a couple, mayor. Last night, the advisory committee for the master plan met for the first time and gave precedent, went over pretty much our responsibilities as an advisory group and kind of set up the meetings. Meeting one was the economic development part. Meeting two, public assets, infrastructures and core services. Meeting three, land use. Meeting four, downtown needs and assessments. Meeting five, preliminary draft review. And we also went over a economic development plan and strategies, goals and strategies. And we had a pretty good turnout and it was a really great conversation. And I think we're moving slowly, slowly but surely, trying to put this together. I don't know if city manager wanted to add to this or not, but that's pretty much.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel.
And one more, mayor. The airport board committee meets tomorrow and we're having representation come down from the airline that... from the airline that, that is providing the air, air here. And if anybody can show up to give comment, we're meeting at eight-thirty. They're going to have a plane out there showing us what, what exactly flies in here and stuff. So if you want to go down there and see that. And then at nine o'clock, that's when we'll have the, the regular airport board meeting, and that'll be in the chambers of the county commissioners. So, and we'll have people talking about the airline and the problems we're having and so forth. So whoever can attend, I would appreciate that and maybe, because they want public input and stuff, so. Thank you, that's all I have.
Charlie, I've got a question for you. We received an email from, I believe it was.
Gigi.
Yes. Scott Falk, specifically dealing with the update on the essential air service in Alamosa and Cortez. And obviously, we're, we, we've got a couple of, or do we have a couple of airlines that are interested in coming to Alamosa, or what? Do we, do we know anything about that?
I, I think that email you're referencing is, is what Counsel Grego just discussed. Our existing essential air service provider is going to have representatives in town. So that email was listing who those representatives were.
Okay, one is for the Great Lakes and the other is from Boutique? I, I don't know if you received that or not, I.
Just mostly the Great Lakes people are going to be here.
Or is that who's going to be here? Okay, well, I just thought I'd ask because I received this email and just received that maybe about three hours ago or so.
Oh, well, I, I didn't see that, Mayor.
Yeah, I, I don't, well, I would encourage anyone to attend that meeting tomorrow then. Thank you very much for that, Charlie.
Thank you.
Counsel Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to, to attend the San Luis Valley Development Resource Group Board meeting that they had this week, and I wanted to thank Heather as well as Counsel Hensley for coming out and participating and sharing what's going on in the city as well as what's going on at, at the university. And if you two wanted to chime in on, on that meeting, feel free to at this time.
Thank you, Counsel Coleman. Counsel Verheil?
Thank you, Mayor. I also went to my committee meeting. This was the school board meeting on Monday. They, it was a quick meeting. They honored Isaiah De La Serra. He is a two-time state champion in wrestling. They honored Kent Smith, the girls' basketball coach. He was recently inducted into the Hall of Fame for Colorado. That's a pretty big deal. And they keep, and I, I apologize, but they also honored the teacher of the year for the district, and I forgot her name. I apologize, but it's in the paper. Also, they're, they keep rolling with testing. Like I said last meeting, it's going to take them about three weeks to get this done. And good news is, they had a ver- a low number of opt-outs from families and the testing, so. And they approved their calendar, and that should be coming out here pretty soon for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Verheil. And I, I attended the COG meeting, and we had a presentation of the economic impact analysis of the effects of reduced groundwater irrigation in the Rio Grande Basin. Dr. Hill was there and gave us a what-if scenario as to some of the major crops and, and what the rotational effects would be if some or, or most of them were taken out of production. We had, Jim was there at that meeting as well. If you want to chime in as well, Jim, you can say a few things. And I think Heather and maybe some of our counselors attended the meeting yesterday with that same, with that same lady, Dr. Hill. And if you wanted to share that, that's fine, too. Other than that, that's all I have for, for my committees. Anyone else? We'll move on then to staff announcements. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind counsel that next week, we actually have a wonderful opportunity to have representatives from DOLA visit us. And we have been extremely fortunate in the last few years to receive some significant grants from DOLA to help us with our projects. And so I think this is a great opportunity for us to, one, really show them what those projects mean to us as a community and how appreciative we are. But I think it's also an opportunity that, I, I think our representative, Kristy Colt, plays a major role in that. I know after we submit our application, she comes and meets with us. She looks at, you know, the different facilities, make sure she understands the projects, and then carries that message up to the discussions they have at the state level. And so I think it's also an opportunity for us to show appreciation for the work that she's done in, in helping us achieve that funding. So it is next week. It's April twenty-seventh at, at ten a.m. And so those of you who can make it, I know it would, it would be, it would be wonderful. We obviously had a little bit of snow this last weekend, so I wanted to thank not only our, our streets crews for how amazing they did on, on getting the streets cleared and, and all of that, but then also some of our other response employees in regards to if we had a down line or any calls for service or, or those types of things. I don't think we were as busy as some maybe would have thought or some in the, out in the county. I know Monty saw a lot of down limbs and working through that. So we were very fortunate, and I just want to thank the, the crews that were out there making it something that it wasn't as bad as what it, it could have felt like. So the comp plan, Mr. Grego has, has covered that. The only thing I wanted to add is, we did close the survey, and it looks like we received three hundred and eighty-six surveys. So we're excited to get that many and, and just want to thank the public for participating in that. And again, this is going to be an ongoing process for public outreach. We plan to have a focus group meeting in May that's going to look at the public assets, the infrastructure, what more does the consultant need to know in regards to some of that, that hard data? And June is probably going to be the next big public outreach that we do. And how the consultant describes that is, that's going to be our physical planning. So that's where they're going to have people draw on maps, what they would like to see maybe in different neighborhoods, or what different amenities they would like to see. So around the June timeframe, we'll be doing another big push to get some public involvement. But again, on our website, we're keeping all the different drafts, all the documents, everything we can to help make it be as transparent as possible. I wanted to let you know, it, it's been a little bit in the news. There has been a group this past year looking at the feasibility of having a valley-wide foundation, a community foundation. I think they're unveiling some of that information next week on if it should move forward and if it does, what that would look like. And so once we receive more information on that, I can share that with, with counsel. We've had a group, the, the mayor actually chairs, which is the ASU Community Partnership. And that group has been working to try to partner with ASU and across the valley. And so that has been partly responsible for the new MPA program that's coming out. It's also that resource guide that was published by ASU. The next step that they're looking at is something the group identified is, does the valley have a brand? And, and is there something we collectively as a group could be promoting that helps all of us? And granted, we kind of have our unique differences. There's, South Fork is different than Alamosa, but as a valley, is there something that, that we could be using from a marketing brand perspective? And so through OEDIT, their blueprint two-point-oh, their, the state is offering technical resources. And so they are applying to see if we can bring a group down from the state to help facilitate a discussion of, you know, what might that brand look like, what would speak to the most people? And it at least gets the ball rolling, and we can see what the next steps are from that. I wanted to point out that Christina will be the speaker at the lean-in lunch tomorrow, and I'm sure she's representing more than just the city, but we can take credit for a little bit of it and the nice publicity that, that she will get as our leader. We sent an email out over the weekend. The line that we had been monitoring, the sewer line that we were concerned about actually then did end up collapsing. And so we do have it, the cones are out there, we're trying to keep traffic off. We, we're not able to do an official bid because we don't have time to advertise, open them and all that, but we did do a verbal bid to where we advertised, or we called the local vendors and, and got a quote. The city attorney had sent me some wording that he thought would be good for me to reference that I do not have at my fingertips at this point in time. But based on that information, we did hire a local contractor. It's below the fifty thousand threshold that would have required me to do some written findings for city council. So it is within, it qualifies as an emergency to allow us not to have to do an official bid process. We will try to keep the road open to, to traffic and, and prevent any disruption, and we hope that it will take less than two weeks. So we were very fortunate that we had a local contractor that had very reasonable prices that were competitive. And so we're grateful to be able to get in there. That is going to be offset by the other portion of delaying the SCADA project. So we are staying within our budget, but it's going to require a budget amendment because we're obviously putting that money towards something else other than what was in the budget. But we're not going over budget at, at this point in time. I have received comments and, and questions from different council members and public in regards to First Street. I think anyone who drives First Street can see that it's, it is deteriorating. Some areas are much worse than, than other areas. And, you know, what we're trying to weigh from a, a staff perspective and what, is what many people may not know, and we need to do a better job of communicating this, is we do have First Street coming up for reconstruction. And so we do still plan to fill potholes. We still, we, we are still going to try to maintain it, but we're trying to not do anything that's too expensive because we will be tearing the street up within the next few years. And so in regards to a timeline, two thousand sixteen and the CIP is for the design and engineering of First Street. Twenty seventeen is when we will actually begin the phases of construction. We will start on the west side of First Street because that's, from a staff perspective, we deem the worst condition of the street, and then we'll work our way east. Depending on the funding, depending on what's required for some of those intersections because some of them are a little tricky, it, it could be a three-to-four-year phased project to get all the way down First Street. The other thing that makes it a project that has to be phases is it's a heavily traveled street. So closing all of First Street is, is not realistic either. And so all of those things combined, but, you know, it's, it is frustrating. I drive on it every, every day and, and, but we don't want people to think we're not aware of it and, and we need to do a better job of communicating that it is going to get done. So if you do hear of anyone, any constituents asking about it, that is the, the timeframe for it to get done. And, you know, we're always open to trying to move it as fast as possible within those considerations. Before I turn it over to two, well, we do have a few things. So the rest from the staff, let's see if we can coordinate this. Holly, I believe you had something on board appreciation that you want to discuss?
So the annual advisory board recruitment process is going to, I'm getting, working on that. And so I need to actually coordinate for their dinner, the board appreciation dinner. And last year, we had it in the fall because we missed the springtime deadline for that. So I just need direction on if you guys want it to happen in the springtime for sure or if you prefer it in the fall now. And I know only a few of you were at the fall once, so I guess it would be kind of decided upon you. And if you want it to happen in the spring.
Counsel, what are your wishes as far as that goes?
For me, the springtime would work.
We got one spring.
What advisory board?
All, all of our city, city advisory boards. Yeah, so we do a board appreciation dinner for them.
Spring is great for me.
Got two springs, and Charlie doesn't care.
So are we talking spring like now?
Yeah, like spring now, so it would be in May.
The grass is turning green and the trees are budding.
We just don't want to do it during the summertime because most people are traveling. We traditionally had done it during the spring, but we just kind of got behind and, and did it in the fall. And then Holly just wanted to find out, you know, do you guys want to keep it in the fall or do you want to go back to the spring, which would be May?
So is this, I, I, so is this a Friday, Sat- I mean, is there a certain day usually this happens? Is it a nighttime thing?
It's a nighttime thing, and it's usually held during the weekday. So like, I think it was on Monday in the fall. So Monday, Tuesday.
I think, I think four of us have sprung for spring, but Counsel Coleman?
I would like to just make a recommendation. If we go with the spring, if we can try to schedule it on a Wednesday, because I think all of us pretty much figure we're going to be doing something with counsel on Wednesday anyway, makes it easier for us. Just my opinion.
I, I can, I can appreciate Counsel Coleman's observation. However, I like weekends myself, but hey, that's, that's okay. Whatever, whatever the group decides is fine with me. Counsel Hensley?
I'm good.
Thank you. Any more staff announcements? Chief, have anything to say? Heinz?
Mayor?
Jim?
We do have some more, thank you.
Oh, good, I'm glad, I'm glad, thank you.
Jim, if you can come up here, and then we do have one more after Jim. I just wanted Jim to talk a little bit about the work that he's been doing with Mona Vista. They've been experiencing some IT issues, and, and him and Brandon, I think, have spent a significant amount of time. And he won't say this, so I'll just embarrass him before he even talks, but we are so very fortunate to have both Jim and Brandon and the level of expertise that they have and dedication to the job. And I know when they got some calls that, that Mona Vista was suffering, you know, it wasn't a matter of what's our role or, or anything like that. It was, we need to see what we can do to help them and, and that type of thing. And so I just, you know, one, want you to have an understanding of what they've been providing, but also it's, it's a lesson for everyone in this day and time, how much our organizations are under attack and, and to be vigilant with the type of emails that people open and, and that type of thing. And so, Jim, if you can go ahead and talk now.
Thank you very much. Counsel Gaveen, we, we got a call several weeks ago from Mona Vista. They were having some difficulties with their network and asked us if we could help them in any way. So we ran over there and took a look at their network. What they had going on was they had been hit by, their police department particularly had been hit by ransomware, essentially locks down all their files, no way to decrypt them or get those files back, and they demand money that doesn't necessarily ever unlock the files. So their measure was to unplug their network for their police department. After almost three weeks of being down, they gave us a call and asked if we could help them in any way. It took us, the two of us working over there quite a bit, better part of a week just to get their servers backed up, get the workstations cleaned up enough to turn on their network again, to get them functional at a bare minimum. So their police department's back online. We've, I can go through a list of different things that we've done to help them out over there over the last few weeks. So they were down for over three weeks. They lost over ten thousand files gone, never to be retrieved. And so we've taken lessons from where they've had problems and, and bolstered our own network. We performed that deep scan on all of their desktops and cleaned them up a little bit. They had user access issues within their domain. We helped them fix that. We secured rogue, rogue accounts on their servers. We've did password changes on all their super-user accounts. Then the next phone call we got from them, they were under attack yet again. This is a, I'm, I'm sure everybody's heard the term phishing. This was a spear phishing. This was not directed at everyone. This was very directed between the city manager and the finance director. And what someone had managed to do is get in as a super user on their Google email and take that to get into the city manager's email and set up hidden rules that essentially made it so the city manager would never see an email from the finance director again. And we, we caught that as it was happening and, and stopped it and changed the security so that couldn't happen to them in the near future. We found, and then Monday morning, we get a phone call after the snowstorm, all their phone lines were down. Everything was dead. So we went in and did some emergency repairs there and got their phone lines up enough so that they could communicate with, with the public again. We also, while we were doing all this, we found that their firewall was out of date and no longer supported. So we helped them buy a new firewall and get that programmed and in place for them. So that on top of what we've been doing with the city for the last few weeks.
And then obviously, I have received very positive comments from the city manager. They're, they're very grateful for the assistance that, that Jim and Brandon have offered. And, you know, I think it's scary when you're in those types of situations. And, and we were just, you know, glad that we could come and help and, and that we have the relationship of trust that, that we were able to assist. And thankfully, we, we have the expertise that we have here, and we feel very, very protected because of that.
Thank you, Heather. Jim and Brandon, you know, we're, we're lucky to have and appreciate our IT department and the value and expertise that you guys provide, not only for us. the value and expertise that you guys provide, not only for us, but for our neighboring cities when they're definitely in need. A police department that's down for that period of time is actually not a good thing for the entire valley, actually. And so, thank you very much and we appreciate you. Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim and Brandon, I just wanted to thank you all for going far beyond your normal call of duties and your work and taking on the additional workload to make Mona Vista's computer programs safe again. I know they appreciate it and it helps their citizens as well as their staff. And I just want to let you know that your work is much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, one last one, I promise. Unfortunately, I saved probably the potential longest one for last. So, Chief, if you want to come up, we had intentional or previously planned for both chiefs to be here, but as you could see, Don received a call. So, he has left. And so, I guess I'll be Don tonight, maybe. I don't, I don't know. We've received some communication in regards to concerns about trains. And I think for this discussion, it might be best if we break up the types of trains, I think, previous to this weekend. There was maybe more 15 minutes or less type of delays caused by some of the trains. I think this most recent weekend, we definitely had some longer delays. I had sent out an email about a week ago in relation to some of these concerns on if there was any issues from a response perspective. And I'll let the chief kind of talk about that. And what's been ironic, even though I said we should separate the two, from a response perspective, it may not make as much difference. But, we do plan to continue to have discussions with Matt on the longer trains in regards to the timing of them, how long they are, how many intersections they're actually blocking and those types of things. But, Chief, I'll let you go ahead and talk.
So, after Heather made us aware of these complaints, I started to talk with the fire chief and also the director of the ambulance service and asked if they had had any issues. I talked with my supervisors, my captains, sergeants, officers, and made sure that I, there weren't any issues that I wasn't aware of. But, as far as response times, neither of the three agencies are affected by normal operations of the train. We communicate well amongst each other. So, Friday, I got a call from Matt Abbey saying we have a train coming in that has 260 cars. Main and State is going to be blocked for approximately 20 minutes. So, an example of the communication, I immediately contacted dispatch and told dispatch that the information that I had received and to notify the other two agencies if they received any emergent calls, that Main and State and as long as the train was, it extended over several of the intersections. They were moving them west, from the west to the south. So, they had to come into town. Once they cleared Main and Ross, they had to change the direction of the travel, reverse it and then go back to the south. So, we not only had Main and State, but Main and Ross as well, or Main and Ross was blocked as well. And then, it extended past Ladue as well. So, we were aware of the possible delays or alternate routes is what we have to take. We have to plan when we know there's going to be a blockage. Unexpected blockages, they have been quite often with the normal flow of the train, but we deal with them the same way. Our officers communicate with each other. If they see that a route is blocked, they let the other officers know if the route's blocked and we find the alternate route, the quickest route to get around it. And it doesn't affect our response time. And the fire chief and the EMS director tells me the same thing. Dispatch will tell them when they're paged for a call, they have an intersection blocked. I didn't know this until I talked to the fire chief. They actually have a light on the, at the intersection of Main and State that shows them, actually, Fourth and State, that shows them whether or not the intersection at Main and State is blocked by a train. It lights up for them. So, he can immediately know or their driver, their engines can know whether or not they can go down state or not. And alls they do is they choose the alternate route and communicate it to the responding fire officers and firefighters. So, it's never been an issue for us. The communication amongst the three agencies and amongst our officers is very clear. Friday, when the 260-car train was coming into town, west was even blocked. When they were coming in, we had a call on the south side and one of my officers says I'm at Main, or at Main and Washington, which is where the Excel building is. It's not blocked here. I'll go around this way. And so, we communicate very well and we eliminate any delays that it may have for our response time.
The other part, just to touch on some of the points I think that have been raised and the concerns is, I think there is an example of one time an ambulance coming up to the crossing and having to back up. And I think you were aware of that situation and had more inside information.
I actually was, as you know, I carry my radio. I listen. I'm aware of what's happening around town. And I did hear this instance, the ambulance state, that they came up to Main and State and they had to go around it, basically. They backed up and went around. One of my officers was already on the scene of the emergent call, relayed to dispatch. We don't talk directly to fire EMS, so we go through dispatch, but relayed to dispatch that what the condition of the patient was, that they were already there and that the patient was stable. So, the EMS knew at that point in time that their delay was not, it was still emergent, but they knew the condition of the patient, that the person was stable. And they, the delay did not affect the care that they received. Our officers are trained in first aid and CPR and everything. They can render basic aid to the point of, like I said, administering CPR. So, we sometimes arrive before EMS. EMS is very quick because they respond directly from the hospital. So, it depends on where the location of the call is, but sometimes we're there and we do communicate with the ambulance and fire when we're there and we update them on the situations.
The other part of the discussion is, you know, for me, as a layperson, it carries a lot of weight when I have the fire chief and the police chief telling me that in their experience, they have not experienced at one point, a train long enough that has created any impact on any of the response times. And so, I understand why the perceptions are out there. I completely understand that. And some of what we've talked about from a staff perspective is that we can do a better job of helping people understand that what they see isn't the whole picture and that there's a lot of communication and coordination going on behind the scenes. I think one of the ideas that was brought up by someone is, you know, could the train not be moving some of the cars at night? And then, what was surprising, if you want to share the answer to that from a law enforcement perspective?
Well, there's no difference between night or day. If we need to get to the south side, we need to get to the south side. And with that comment being made, it gave me an impression that they just didn't care that, okay, I'm not there during the night, so it doesn't make a difference. But, for us, it does. Whether it's day or night, three or four o'clock in the morning or three or four o'clock in the afternoon, our response times are still the same and we communicate the same amongst each other. We work 24/7, not Monday through Friday.
Well, and I think from a fire perspective too, if you look at when their calls come in, it can sometimes be more at night than necessarily during the day. And so, some of those comments, you know, while they seem, oh, well, you know, it's not as busy at night or different things like that, the call volume doesn't necessarily always support that either. And so, it's something that we just, you know, we want to do a better job of that. We have talked to Matt. And you know, one of the ideas I had was, well, what if we put out on Facebook, you know, we're going to have a long train tomorrow? Well, his concern, and I think it's very valid, is, well, what's a long train to you may not be a long train to someone else? And what if he's out and the person who's supposed to let us know doesn't? And what kind of expectations are we really giving with that type of thing? What he was very comfortable doing though is what he's somewhat doing already, but then maybe doing it on a more regular basis, is communicating with us in advance and making sure that our emergency responses and dispatch are aware when we're going to have the trains. The other part, since Don is not here, is to keep in mind that we have two fire stations. And so, they respond from craft. And that's when you hear them say that there's never been a train long enough to block access to the south side, that's part of the reason. And the other part is the signals that have been put in for this side of Alamosa, so they know not to get to that intersection. And so, I think that was very important information.
Thank you. Has anyone been to Walsenburg lately? How long do you wait for that train to go across the tracks? That is a long train many times. My observation is, people are justified in their concern when things like this happen. However, I can see that we've got cross-agencies and inter-agency communication happening all the time. You guys have looked at that and brought their concerns to the forefront, the concerns of our citizens. And they're the ones that, you know, suffer if something happens. But, the way you have mitigated this through good communication, alternative routes and really getting in there and looking at the issue, I think, is paramount to the best you can do, to due diligence. And I think our citizens or the citizens in our community can feel at ease in knowing that if there's an emergency somewhere, they're going to be taken care of regardless of whether there's a train in an intersection or not. And I think we all need to be, or at least have comfort in knowing that, especially the citizens that have deep concerns. Counselor Gregel?
One comment if I may, Mayor. So, you say that there's never been a train long enough that blocks all of the crossings?
We're talking all the way out to-
All the way to Craft?
Correct.
There hasn't ever been one?
Not to my knowledge, no. And Don said in his time here, serving as the firefighter, fire chief, everything, he's only had one instance that he was delayed because of a train.
So, a 260-car deal wouldn't block it from?
I saw it that day coming in and no, we did not have any-
It left at least one entrance, I mean, one crossing available?
There's always have been at least one crossing available. And our officers are on the south side of town a lot. They're on the north side of town. They're on the west. There's always an officer that can get across to one of those intersections quickly, not to the delay of the response.
Because that was one of the major concerns that was brought to my, was that the fact that they were blocking the whole, all the, all the crossings and-
I agree. And that's my concern too. And that's one thing that we think of, what if there is a train that long? How, what are we going to do and how are we going to do it? The way our patrol areas are designed, I think we're always going to have one officer out on the south side somewhere to be able to, or on the north side. You know, we're not just talking south, but that's the topic of the discussion. But, we are always going to have one, at least one officer that can respond to either side of town quickly or be in that area generically.
Well, I believe as the city manager said, that this communication needs to get out because the perception right now is that it's, we're not doing nothing and it's blocking out, you know, and people get scared, you know? They see several things blocked, you know, if somebody needs some kind of emergency for the hospital, some, they're scared.
I agree. And citizen safety is our priority.
Sure. And I appreciate what you're doing and all that, but I think more communication out there, you know, letting people know that we are on top of it, you know? It's not, that's something that we're not taking lightly because it, an emergency is an emergency, whether it's ambulance or some kind of safety deal.
I agree with you.
Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I too was a part of that delay a little bit on Friday. So, I can see where the perception is coming from with some of the people in the community. But, it's very comforting to know that there's great communication between all of the agencies. And I think that's the first step, just letting people know about the communications that you all have right now. This is a great forum so people will know that. It has to be a very long train to go all the way from state or all the way to Craft. And it may look like a train that's reaching that four, but it's good to know that we have emergency services that can still get to the south side or get back to the north side if something were to happen. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counsel. Are there any further questions or comments for the chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your being here. While that does it for staff announcements, we will then now move on to what some of the folks in the audience have been waiting for all evening, and that is a needs and desires hearing on the application of Maria de Lourdes Lopez doing business as Calvios Liquor for a retail liquor store at 407 Main Street. And I believe we turn this over to our attorney. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. So, what we have is a hearing to determine the needs of the neighborhood for the liquor establishment, which is a retail liquor establishment being applied for here and the adult, the desires of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood for that establishment. The neighborhood is defined as the entire city of Alamosa plus a one-mile radius unless the applicant asks for a different neighborhood. And the applicant in this case did not ask for a different neighborhood. The application, it has been on file with the city clerk and the notice of that was posted, is that correct? So, the notice has been posted for the requisite time. And the purpose then of this hearing is to hear evidence from the applicant about the needs and desires of the neighborhood for this liquor store. So, I think the first step would be to turn it over to the applicant to present the prima facie case of a need and desire for this liquor store. And then, we'll open it to the audience for anybody wishing to speak in favor of or against
Okay.
Okay, so, our desire is just pretty much to bring something different to the city. I know a lot of the other liquor stores, they don't offer like a good wine selection as far as I know. And that's one thing we want to bring into the town. And the establishment that we purchased is, as far as I know, as far as I lived here in Alamosa, it's been eight years, it's been just alone. There's nothing, there is just a rundown house. So, we figure if we try to do something with it, and with us, the best option was a liquor
Can we ask questions, Eric?
Yes, by all means.
Okay.
Counselor Daniel?
So, when you were thinking about the businesses and the wine, were there any other things that brought you to want to do a liquor store versus another kind of retail?
We tried thinking of different items, but like I said, with us, the best option for us was just a liquor store. And since I already own Calvios, we figure, you know, just add something else to it, you know, bring more customers, I guess, into both businesses.
And what are your plans for training your staff and ensuring that there are no underage sales or anything like that going on?
My being in retail, I'm 24 years old, but I've been in retail for five years. I worked for the Army Design Center and right now, I work at Ace Hardware of Alamosa for it's been five years. And right now, I always work from my way up to, or from my way, from the bottom to assistant managers as far as right now. And with that being said, I've been trained, I have trained people and I'm pretty confident myself that I'll be able to train other associates as in handling the business properly and not taking anything under or selling to anybody underage.
Thank you.
Counselor Henzley? No?
I had a question of where it actually was located, but actually, Councilman V. Hill showed me on his phone. So, we got that cleared up.
Counselor Coleman?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, did you do a market study to see if there's a need for an additional liquor store in town by any chance, or is this something you just figured would be a good location for?
I did not. We just kind of figured it would be a good location for it. Right now, I am studying for business and, you know, I think this would be a good opportunity for me to, you know, get into something like this, so.
Do you have any petitions or anything like that to show the needs and desires of the neighborhood perchance? Do you have a petition that was filled out by people in the neighborhood? Can you provide that to our city clerk or our attorney, please?
I only have this paper.
We do have the signatures, but we did not bring them. But we do have signatures of quite a bit of people that agree with the liquor store and the location of it.
Counselor Hensley.
So do you have an idea of how many signatures you have?
Like, thirty, thirty-five, something like that.
And so I guess my next question, so do you already own this building?
Yeah.
And so, if everything went the way you wanted, when would you think you would open this?
We got the notice of our building, so we have been adding stuff to it, because it was pretty much rundown, there is other stuff that needed to be fixed, so we have been building it. And as soon as we get approved with the license, maybe...
One month.
Like, in about a month, or two months at most.
Just in case any of the other council members, or members of the public had a question, there's 407 Main, so you have Main right here, and then this is Denver, so right there.
That's on Denver Avenue, isn't it? I'm sure, Sixth and Denver, is that what it is? Sixth and Denver.
It's Main and Denver. Sixth is downtown.
Yeah, well, it intersects Main, correct? It's right next to Calvios, it's right on the corner, it's right on the corner. Yeah, the old, but, oh, okay. Quick question, specific to needs and desires of the neighborhood. You already have, or we already have Terry's Liquor, which is not even a block away, and then you've got, on the other side of, over on Broadway, I believe, you've got another liquor store. And so, how do you come about the, thinking that the needs and desires of this neighborhood are not being met?
With me, just with the customer service part, like I said, I've been in retail just for five years, for a little over five years, and I believe us providing really good customer service will be providing the customers with the need, or excel the experiences from their coming to visit us, instead of going to them.
Well, you knew your needs and desires hearing was going to be tonight, but yet you neglected to bring the signatures, and the proof that you really need, to convince us, because I need to be convinced that there's a need to have another liquor store in that area, and...
Counsel, that's a very good point, Mayor, and I would suggest that it would be possible to continue this hearing, and they say they have the petition and didn't bring them. Counsel could decide to continue, or could vote to continue the hearing, to allow that to happen until the next meeting, or you could say, well, this was it, but that is a possibility to handle that problem.
Thank you, Counsel. I think Counsel should know how I feel about that at this point in time, is that, you know, without any proof, or anything like that, it's kind of hard for me to make a decision either way. Counselor Coleman.
I'm just curious, Eric, and probably you can help clarify this, is that a requirement, that they bring a petition with a certain amount of names, if so?
No, it's not a requirement, but they have to make a prima facie showing, which means, you know, some evidence to show that there is a need and desire, a need for this establishment, and a desire amongst the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood, which, again, is the whole city. So I don't know that you need to focus on the fact that there's two liquor stores in fairly close proximity, but they have to bring threshold evidence to show those needs and desires, and we may get some testimony about that. We haven't opened the public hearing yet, but that would be the purpose.
My second question, were you all aware that you were supposed to bring those documents?
I wasn't.
Counselor Daniel.
That was going to be my question, too, similar to Mr. Coleman. Obviously, I think this is your first foray into this, and you're trying something new, and you want to be entrepreneur, so thank you for wanting to start something different. And I think maybe just some coaching about what that could look like might be necessary. And so, I do feel similar to the mayor, that I was hoping for a little bit more information from you today, but I also wouldn't be opposed to continuing this. I know there might be some other people on council, but I would not be opposed to continuing this, to give you an opportunity to get some coaching, and talk about what you need to do, in order to show us that this is something that our community would support.
Counselor Gregel.
Mayor, my question is, when you talk about needs and desires, how many different liquor licenses do we have in that general area, period? You know, and we're talking tavern, we're talking hotel restaurant, we're talking retail, just in that little general area, I don't know how many licenses are already there, you know? So I wanted to point that out, to see how many.
I appreciate that. Counselor Gregel. Counselor Hensley.
So I guess I echo what Counselor Daniel said, is, I would, I'd like to see, maybe give that opportunity, so I would also say I would be in favor of an opportunity for maybe you to regroup, really present, come back and show us. Again, obviously, it is something that's not just an easy, yes, you're going to be able to do this, that type of thing, this is, obviously, there's a lot to it. At the same time, I do agree with you, there's an empty space there, we are trying to build and have more businesses, and so, again, I agree with that entrepreneurial spirit, but I'd like to see, really, what makes yours, gives you that competitive advantage, what makes you, that yours is so important that it's going to make that difference? And so, maybe giving you that opportunity to come back and re-present.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Eric, we could continue this, table it, what would be your recommendation, if Counsel saw?
Well, we've opened the public hearing, and I guess I would ask, before you take any action one way or the other, we ask whether there's anybody here wanting to speak on that. And then, before closing the public hearing, probably take up, if there's going to be a motion to continue, take that up, such that you don't close the public hearing, and the whole hearing then gets continued until your next meeting, or whenever you choose to continue it.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wanting to speak on this subject?
Okay, I think it would be wise, then, if there's going to be a motion to continue the hearing, to discuss when you might want to continue it, and discuss such a motion.
I've got to close the public hearing.
No, I think I'd leave it open, just so that, at the continued...
Thank, thank you, Counsel.
There would be an opportunity for people to speak.
Is there any further discussion? Counselor Daniel.
I actually just wanted to make the motion to continue, so if there's other discussion, I can...
I just want to, I think we should give them an opportunity to come back and present at a later time, and appreciate your efforts of coming out here tonight, but it'd be a good idea to come back and continue with the list of items, and then just clarify, make sure that you get everything that's required, so that when you come back, you'll have all the information that's needed, okay?
Okay.
One more comment, too, just kind of what Mr. Coleman is saying, is, you need to have the evidence showing that there is a need there, to present at the council, so they can either approve it or disapprove it. But you got to show, you know, make the effort to show that there's, that there is a need, and that's, that might be through signatures, that might be through people coming and testifying, or stuff like that, you need to show the, like, in court, and evidence that it's needed there, so.
Thank you, Counselor Gregel. Counselor Hensley.
And I guess I would just add that, with what Councilman Gregel said, is, I think also, just not signatures, bringing people, I know I've actually been through this process before, not sitting here, but on your side, and so definitely using that forum to really show, you know, why this is important, so.
Thank you. One thing I might also add is, we've got an excellent city clerk that could probably help you with, try to navigate some of the issues that you've probably heard here this evening, so that might be a resource for you as well. Counselor Daniel.
With all of those comments, I would move that we continue this public hearing into our next meeting, which is, I forget which date, sorry.
May 4th.
May 4th, thank you. Would, that we move to continue this meeting into, this hearing into May 4th, and hear the rest of their presentation at that time.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second, and I've got a question of Eric. Eric, does the public hearing remain open, then?
Yes.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second to continue the public hearing, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. So we will continue the public hearing, and give you an opportunity to come back at a later date, check with our city clerk, and be placed on the agenda. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Consent Calendar B. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar B contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Counsel may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have had Mr. Jeff Woodward sitting in that chair all evening for this decision, so we've got two special event permits, one for June the 21st of 2016, and one for September 2 and 3 of 2016, by the early Sun Valley, San Luis Valley, Early Iron Incorporated. Counsel?
Mayor, can we make just one motion for both of those?
Yes. Counselor Gregel?
I'll make the motion that we approve Consent Calendar B1 and B2.
Counselor Vehill?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second on Consent Calendar B, to include B1A and B2A. Is there any further discussion?
No discussion, but a comment, I'm just looking forward to these two events coming to our town.
Thank you. Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel, and so we are now at Counsel Comment. Anyone have a comment?
I do have a comment.
Counselor Coleman?
It's been a long night, long day, okay. First, I would like to thank city council members, and also the Alamosa School District, for the breakfast that we attended this week. I think it was a very positive breakfast, we got a lot of good feedback from them, and we were able to share some information with them, in regards to what we're working on. So I want to thank them, as well as Counsel, who was able to attend. I also would like to encourage those in the community, as well as Counsel, to support our Counselor, Ms. Daniels, tomorrow in her presentation at the Lunch and Learn, I think that's what it is, something event?
It's the Lean In Lunch?
Lean In Lunch, I'm sorry.
Lean, L-E-A-N? I should be attending that one.
Yeah, Lean In Lunch. Because I know Counselor Daniels, she does a good job in presenting, and letting us know about the issues that are affecting our community, and I just wanted to make a comment in regards to, a lot of people do come up and talk to all of us about First Street, and what's happening, and the construction, and things like that. So I was just, wanted to make a recommendation, maybe, from time to time, if we could post something on Facebook, to give people an idea about what we're working on, so they won't think that we're not working on it. But we all know that we are working on trying to make sure that First Street is taken care of, so that would be my recommendation. And if we could just put something on the website, just basically, to where if they want to know what's going on with First Street from time to time, they can just click on the website and see that we are taking action, to make sure that we address those issues. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Anyone else? Counselor Daniel.
So thank you very much for your support about the Lean In Lunch, I just wanted to clarify a little bit, it is primarily, it was designed for women to get together, so you are more than welcome to attend, if you would like, councilors, councilmen, if you would like. But it was, there are tickets and things like that, because of the kind of organization it is, so if you hadn't already gotten your tickets, I don't, I don't know that you would be able to do that, but I do appreciate the support, and I would be happy to share, you know, my comments with you at a different time, as well. But thank you for the support, I appreciate that a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you very much for clarifying that, I probably would have been a little embarrassed if I showed up. I still would have walked in, but thank you for giving the heads up.
Well, I kind of liked the lean part, but anyway...
I was just going to add that I will, since I'm on the female side here, that I will represent, and I will report back on how well Councilman Daniels does.
Very good.
Thank you, and I've got a couple of comments as well. I'd like to thank Counselor Coleman for taking the last couple of meetings that I was excused from. I think Counsel did an excellent job in a lot of the decisions that were made, so I appreciate that. The other folks that I'd like to thank, as well, are the folks from Public Works, and the way they cleared the streets and took care of us during that awesome snowstorm that we had. I mean, I think we had like about nine, 10 inches of snow in a very short period of time, and our streets, I had no problem maneuvering with anywhere in the city, and so, kudos to our city manager, our Public Works Director, and then all the folks out there that were grading at 8, 9, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, whatever it was, so thank you, folks, for that, we really appreciate it, and I know our citizens appreciate it as well, as well as the citizens that probably have handicaps, and there's a person across the street from me that's in a wheelchair, and he was being, he could navigate, and so, thank you very much for that, I appreciate that. Anyone else with a comment? Seeing none? Tonight, we have a need for an executive session pursuant, anyway, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Daniel?
I move that we move into executive session pursuant to Colorado Revise Statute 2464024F for personnel matters, with the regard to the evaluation of the city clerk.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion on an executive session? Seeing none? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel. We will move into executive session, and after our executive session is over, we'll move back into regular session, Ruth, and no business, regular business will be discussed. Thank you.